You know, at least majority of that people were literally pushing forward and support somebody to do something they don't, they don't want to do.
I can't unmute them.
Right, well, if you have.
All right, everyone, welcome to our town council meeting. We'll call the meeting to order and please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, thank you, Kate. Thank you, everyone. Kate, roll call.
Councilor Atkinson.
Here.
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 Councilor Panessa.
Here.
Councilor Pusen.
Here.
Councilor Russell.
Here.
Councilor Beach.
Here.
There you have a corner.
Thank you. All right, so we are now on our audience of citizens, so I have two folks on the sign in sheet. I have, yeah, I have it. First up, Rich Gagliardi, come on up, welcome. Up there to the podium. You got, you got the podium. You're in charge. You're at the podium. Just name an address for the record.
Rich Gagliardi, twelve seventy-eight High Road, in the Kensington section.
Kensington section, the village of Kensington, right? Yes, yeah, yeah.
Yes, hello. Councillors, good evening. My name is Rich Gagliardi and I'm Vice President of the Berlin Land Trust. Fortunately, we learned last week that four state legislators proposed the sale of two point seven acres of Lamentation Mountain State Park to the park's southerly neighbor. Sale of this land will block park access from the Berlin Turnpike and prohibit citizens from utilizing this beautiful area. It's Berlin's only state park. Berlin Land Trust oppose, is opposed to the sale of this property. We're asking the Berlin Town Council pass a resolution opposing House Bill fifty-five twenty, file number five eighty-four, an act concerning the conveyance of a parcel of state land in the town of Berlin. Once you pass this resolution, we genuinely hope you will make your opposition, your opposition to this bill known to all state legislators. We are seriously concerned with the precedent being set here that the reward for encroaching and trespassing on state land is the opportunity to purchase the land you've encroached upon for a bargain price with no proper appraisal needed. Does anyone think this makes sense? Dave Voight, one of our directors and Chair of our Trails and Hiking Committee, has witnessed this encroachment. I'd like you to hear what Dave has to say about that encroachment.
He is next on the list. Thank you. Welcome, Dave. Just the name and address for the record, if you could.
David Voight, fourteen Canoeburg Court.
Thank you.
Not in Kensington. I am a member of the public. I see in some writings, I am the member of the public. Testimony that mentions a member of the public informing DEP decision. I am that member. I live across from this access road. I've hiked up there to Lamentation several times. Never had a problem. Couple of years ago, this landowner put no trespassing private property signs on, in Berlin, on the access road on state property. I contacted DEP, they went through their process and yes, this landowner thinks the easy solution would be for him to just buy this acre. It would block the access up there. He's been in for three years on the land, although he's more recently put even more buildings on basketball court. He's improved the road, he's done drainage, cleared a lot of trees. And yes, it would be easier for him to just buy this land. This would be the access to that state park in Berlin. I could see a lot of usage for it there. Probably.
So, please join our opposition to this travesty with your formal opposition to the sale of this land and more specifically, House Bill fifty-five twenty. We all need to work together to protect Berlin's open space resources for the citizens of our town.
Rich?
Thank you. I wanted to hear your presentation, but the bill's dead.
Right.
Okay. The bill's dead. It's not going anywhere. And the representative went to the chairman and explained the situation. And in fact, they're going to investigate a certain individual in that community to see how they got what they have there. So I just wanted to reassure you that, thank you for coming.
Yes.
And I always like seeing you, Rich.
I'll actually see you tomorrow.
Yeah, you will.
Well, we've been hearing that the bill is dead, but we keep seeing elements, okay, I'll let.
I, I would definitely like to speak on this. I have written opposition. I think that if you thought, and I don't even want to get into Facebook, but this situation was brought to my attention just by chance last Thursday. The deputy mayor came up to speak opposing this legislation. I did my research. Like you said, there are four representatives that signed on to this, made application for it. And you're absolutely right in everything that you're saying. One of those four representatives decided to approach me today. And he informed me that, you know, that especially with all the opposition, that it was, you know, being pulled until we close session out. I, I'm not comfortable with just that the four leadership said that it's being pulled, okay? No one has formally told me that other than Jack, okay? But he says it's dead, but there's lots of things that happened. The implementer comes through and everything, but the kitchen sink gets thrown into that. So until we're finished, but there, if you want, you can see the testimony, you can visit me on Facebook or up in Hartford in terms of, you know, what I've said about this, what lots of people have said about it. It's absolutely appalling that they thought that they were going to push this through and set a precedence in this community where we love our open space, okay? I don't know why they would have all signed on to this, you know? Three of them represent the Meriden area and one of them represents this area as well. So it's, it's a terrible situation.
Thank you for your support.
Well, no, not a problem. Thank you.
We just are not going to believe it until the legislative session ends because we know, we're just fearful. This has been approved at two different levels of process. And it's, we're just fearful it's going to get squeaked into something. And, and as Dave said, once we lose the road and trail access to the land, it'll be difficult for people to take advantage of it. And then, you know, the Berlin Land Trust is actively working to develop the Mount Lamentation recreational resource. We've just, Dave has laid the new yellow trail on some of our properties there, so we're hoping to introduce more Berlin folks to the beautiful woodland up there. So, thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. So maybe we should, do we add this to, just have a, just a real brief discussion? I know it's maybe killed, but so we'll maybe add it to the agenda. While you folks are here, we'll, we'll add it to our agenda shortly, just have a little bit of more of a discussion, just to make sure everybody knows all the facts, but we'll do, so, but for now, we'll continue with the audience of citizens, then we'll add it. So there's nobody else on the sign list, so anyone else wishes to speak to the council now would be the time. Yes, Barbara. Come on up. I'm sorry, Barbara, we should have a mic for you there, but.
My second most important vehicle.
There you go.
I'm on the Commission for the Aging. I'm the chairperson, and I just wanted to address the council. We have a vacancy. We've had a vacancy for a couple of months now due to an illness of, of another member that had to resign. And I would really like to get this wrapped up before the end of the, we have a May and June meeting left. And I would like to have a quorum for those meetings. So I do have an applicant. Her name is Jerry Russell. She has volunteered at the Senior Center. She has come, she comes to our meetings. She's a Berlin resident for fifty years, which means that she has grown with Berlin. And she's interested in seniors issues, and I would like to recommend her for our commission because she seems to be very involved in the seniors. Thank you.
Thank you, Barbara. What's on there? Okay, I'm sorry. Anyone else for the audience of citizens? Yes, sir. Come on up.
Ronald Budria, one fifteen Skinner Road.
I don't.
Okay, be better, be better.
Could always be better, Cornell.
Well, yeah, it's just, I feel like there's a force threat in schools vis a vis the budget. That's a referendum next week. It's a, it's a bad budget school. I believe that it's worthy of a no too low vote. It's not meeting the proposed budget from the BOE, not even halfway, it's a sixty percent reduction to the tune of nearly two million dollars. Proposed cuts, actually approved by the BOE last night, are pretty drastic. It involves the elimination of ESS, which if, I don't know if everybody here at home familiar with it, that's Mental Health Services at McGee as well as at Berlin High School. It's proposing the elimination of sports at the middle school. I personally have a huge issue with that. I have a daughter in middle school right now. She took initiative this year. In addition to her soccer, she said, you know what, Dad, Mom? Retract. Never done it before. Feel like now's the time to start branching out, go multi-sport. I was like, go for it. The opportunity is there. Take advantage of it. It's unwise, unfair to implement austerity measures, a school district that is not top-heavy. The proposed cuts are severe. I know that every year people say, well, always proposed is going to be cuts. You never see it, yada, yada, yada. You can only cut so much and reshuffle so much before you are going to lose staff. You are going to lose programs. And you are going to have to answer for why you don't trust education system. It says constantly, we will have to reduce our staff and our programs. Budget is a bad budget. It's not even meeting the rate of inflation. It doesn't even meet the BOE's ask halfway. It is a bad budget. It is worthy of a no too low vote. And as the mayor and council members said when they approved the budget, it's up to the voters. Turnout Tuesday, vote no too low on the budget.
Thank you. Okay. Anyone else, audience of citizens here? Yes, come on up.
Good.
Mel Damanjolo, eighty-six Devonshire Way in Berlin. Formerly known as Kensington. It's budget season. Usually that's when I come out. Have missed several key meetings due to travel. But here we are again. I was disappointed to see that the budget was severely underfunded, the proposed budget for the Board of Ed. That's what I'm here to support. And this is not about what is necessarily being cut, because there's a lot, unfortunately, that is being cut that is being proposed to be cut. Because there has to be an idea of what may be cut, given the underfunding. I firmly believe that it's up to the leadership for the Board of Ed, the superintendent and the board, to finally decide what makes sense based on the final numbers. But as town council members and knowing, hoping that, you know, we will be successful in getting the parents out to, to wake up and to understand that this is a severe underfunding of the Board of Ed budget and come out to referendum next Tuesday so that they can also vote no too low and it will start the process and, and come back. And hopefully at that point, you guys will realize that we don't want to have a school system that can just make do. Mayor Mark, you said last time at the last meeting, well, we're going to pass that two point seven five percent because they've been able to, to find a way and to make do. Is that really what we want? We want to continue to keep the same level of education, the same level of programming for the students besides schoolwork that they go in and do day in and day out. And it deserves proper funding. It doesn't even meet contractual obligations. Given that it doesn't meet that at contractual obligations being four point something percent, there will definitely be some cuts. Now, what will it end up being? It's, it's to be determined based on what is essentially passed. I know that there has to be a mill rate increase. Thank you for sending out the postcards. That's actually the first time that has been sent and hopefully it creates awareness for the town. I would have preferred to have seen the Board of Ed being closer to the four percent that the town budget is. And, you know, hopefully, hopefully that can be. We should be proud of our school system and should be able to fund it accordingly. And for a few more basis point increase in mill rate, you know, we could be funding it and fund the shortage that is currently there at one point eight million. So I ask for your support and hopefully when it comes back, you will be able to see that an underfunding of the school system is not where we'd like to be as a town. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else in the audience of citizens?
Mark, I'd like to speak if I could.
Yes, yes, George.
So, George Miller, twelve thirty-one Orchard Road. I am a member of the Board of Finance. I understand this conversation. It goes on every single year. They lament that we never fund the Board of Education as to their minimum requirement. It hasn't happened in like six or seven years. They've gotten substantially below what they claim to be their minimum contractual obligations. Yet every year for those last four or five or six years, they've managed to come under budget each and every time. One of the issues that we have in dealing with the Board of Education is we ask for certain information, i.e. this year was very contentious. All we asked them is point blank, what cuts did you make? Julia Erickson refused to respond to Sal Bordnaro on the Board of Finance. So essentially, all we have to go with is like statistical data relative to other schools in our Derg, other schools in our area, and other schools, you know, throughout the state of Connecticut. That's the information we use. We find that we are more than adequately funding our area. If you look at the eight schools, seven schools that they had picked out multiple times in their presentations to point out and, and, and highlight, like Rocky Hill, Glastonbury, Weathersfield and so forth. We actually, on a per pupil basis, fund more for our per pupils than any one of those other schools this past year. So, you know, I kind of feel like we're giving them an adequate amount. You know, I, again, the contractual obligation thing comes up year and year after, but for the last five or six years, they have managed to come under budget every single year. So how do they have all these contractual obligations, but yet they're able to meet the budget? One of the things that they have told us point blank is, and Julia has said this multiple times to Sal, it is none of our business to deal into what they are spending their money on. So any cuts they make in their fifty million dollar budget, plus the other ten million provided by the school, when they say they're going to cut this, that and the other thing, those are the absolute minimum highest, minimum lowest priority things that they have in their budget. At least that's what they're saying when they make those cuts. So if that's the deal, then that's the point we're at. Thank you.
Just because it showed up in chat, it was Julie Dennis. Okay, thank you.
Just going to say that, yes, yeah. He misspoke. Yeah, George, just Julie Dennis, the president of the Board of Ed you're talking about, not Julie Erickson.
I'm sorry, I apologize. You're right. I apologize.
All right, and we set the record straight.
I'm seeing Julie's name up there and I, I, sorry, Julie, Julie Erickson.
All right, so we, all right, thank you, thank you, George. Any other comments here in person or online? Do we have anybody else online? Okay, I don't see any hands up. Okay, so, thank you all for your input. We appreciate it and absolutely, you know, to echo the, the, you know, what we have said before, for the budget vote, we, we want people to go and vote at the budget referendum. Unfortunately, I don't know, probably since I've been here, the votes are very, very low. I mean, we're talking, what are we talking, five hundred people? I don't even know if we get to five hundred out there sometimes out of a maybe a thousand tops, thousand? What is it, thousand?
I would need to.
Yeah, it's somewhere around there.
It's been low.
It's been low. What is it? Fifteen hundred out of fourteen thousand voters in town are fifteen thousand voters, so. We wish more would come out to really get the will of the people, but we will do the best we can with what, how they vote. And we always have listened to the voters every year that, that I've been here. We've adjusted things. It'll come back around through the process, so we'll see after, after Tuesday. All right, so we'll close the audience of citizens. I'll I'll pass on the mayor's update tonight. We'll, we'll go, you know, because we want to add that other agenda item, talk a little bit about the Berlin Turnpike property. So we'll go ahead to our, first go to our consent agenda. And we'll look at that, folks, first, then we'll get to our regular meeting. What do we have here? We've got two, yeah, twelve items. Just run through them very quickly, just we've all read them before, had the packet, looked at them. Transfer one hundred and nine thousand change to the accompanying spreadsheet to be attached, the minutes to cover higher than budget expenditures in, in the identified accounts, except monetary, number two, except monetary donations, totally two hundred and sixty dollars. These are donations for the library. Number three is approve waiving the police fees in the approximate amount of nine or ninety-nine dollars for the all-night grad party to be held on June seventh and eighth. It's from the police budget. Number four is approve waiving the police fees in the approximate amount of nine or ninety dollars for the Berlin Volunteer Fire Department car show to be held on May twenty-fifth. Number five, on our consent agenda, approve waiving the police fees and for the Festival on the Hill, two thousand three hundred and ninety-two dollars. That's held on June eighth of this year. Except, number six, accept the donation of a hundred dollars for the police K-9 expenditure account. Number seven, accept, accept the donation, a hundred and seventy-five dollars to the Supplies Expenditure Account for the Police. Number eight, approve Berlin Dolphin Swim Team Booster Club to sell prepackaged foods and beverages at the Berlin Dolphin Swim, Swim Team Home Meet in twenty twenty-four. Number nine, approve Berlin Little League to be able to sell food, beverages, ice cream, candy and merchandise for the twenty twenty-four baseball season at Garrity and Placini Fields, Park and Rec. Number ten, approve accepting six-foot sterling bench from Barco Products, one thousand two hundred and fifty dollars with a plaque to be placed on at Sage Park in memory of Frank Modernano. Park and Rec, number eleven, approve Berlin High School class of twenty twenty-five to sell food and beverages at Berlin High School events during the twenty four, twenty-five school year, and that's Park and Rec as well. And number twelve, authorize town manager Arroche to apply for the Historic Documents Preservation Grant for the twenty twenty-five targeted grant, the amount of seven thousand five hundred dollars. Upon receipt, the grant will be deposited into special grant fund account. So that's our consent agenda. We've all looked at it. If there's no other comments, we'll go ahead and take a motion on that.
I move we accept the consent agenda as presented.
Thank you. Second on that? All right, hearing no other comments, so all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? All right, so moved? All right, we'll move on to new business and I think we had a couple of things to add here, right? Kate, we have this one.
You're going to, you have to add the, as far as early voting for the possible August primary.
Okay.
Have it at one location.
Okay.
For early voting.
Okay.
Do we need to vote to put on the agenda?
Yes.
Yeah, so we'll go ahead and take a motion, yeah.
I make a motion that we add the item for discussion of one polling place for early voting in person.
But that'd be Kate, number seven?
It can be, sure.
Yeah, one minute, let's, let's, let's make that number seven. Second?
Second.
All right, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? So moved? And if we could just have a motion to have a brief discussion on the property.
I move we have a discussion on the possible sale of state property on, on the Berlin Turnpike and a possible resolution by the council.
Thank you for picking on that. Thank you. Any other comments or questions? Hearing none, all is in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? All right, so moved and we'll make that, what, one A? So moving on to new business. Probably one, one A, we could start with one A?
Yes.
Okay, makes sense, right? Yeah, all the alphabet. All right, so here we are. We, we heard from the public. Heard from our state rep, heard from Peter, what's going on, you know, what we think is going to happen. We hope that happens and we, you know, thank goodness we've heard about this. And Charlie went to, to the, the hearing earlier, a couple of weeks ago, Donna, we wrote, Donna and I wrote, wrote an opposition to it as well. And it's, and, you know, the, the deep commissioner, right, was, was very, I'll let you speak to that, was very much opposed to it.
Yes, Mayor. And you can access any of the letters of opposition, and they were all letters of opposition from several land agencies, if you will, Save the Sound, the Parks and Free Space. You know, Dykes from Deep also submitted written opposition testimony. And she thinks the guy should be fined, sets a horrible precedence. You know, really, it's, it's not an okay thing. I mean, this is a resident that has been encroaching for a very long time and evidently it was called out about two years ago. The state came and surveyed the area and we're talking several outbuildings, a basketball court, the extended driveway that could be blocked and make the area the state property, the forty, fifty acres or so inaccessible. Gained, it would gain this person extra frontage on the Berlin Turnpike, which is certainly, in my opinion, premium property. I don't care if it's a rock ledge or not. I mean, obviously the area is developable. His home is there. And I can't imagine that, you know, with the nature of the business that he has been doing for years, that he wouldn't know where his boundaries were. I mean, I can't imagine. Encroaching several areas. We're not just talking about one little spot, several. So, like I said, Charlie was kind enough to come up and speak. I submitted written testimony as well. And I know that there were several, several other entities that, you know, oppose this legislation. And it did move out of committee, twelve seven. And as far as I'm concerned, nothing's dead until we leave session on May eighth. Because that's how it works up there. And Peter, you know that. You've been there. So regardless of what they say, and I certainly hope it is dead. You know, and there's been a lot of opposition, so I can't imagine that it wouldn't be dead, but like I said, until the singing's done, that's how I feel.
Well, as a student of the legislature, having spent six years there and twenty years representing my agency there, it's a short year. It's not a raised committee bill. It's dead. It's not going anywhere. We're beating a it's a short year. It's not a raised committee bill. It's dead. It's not going anywhere. We're beating a dead horse for no reason I could think of. Why is this even on our agenda? We're, we're, we're a town council. I'd like to ask the representative from the 30th a bunch of questions about her votes. But I wouldn't take your time tonight or any other time. That's not our form. Our form is to do the town's business. We saw a problem. It's been eradicated. In fact, the, the good part of this bill is they're going to see that these buildings, these encroachment buildings should be taken down. I mean, that's what the representative told me. So I, I don't know why we're discussing this, but I can just reiterate, an Italian morta. Richie understands that.
Yes, uh, yeah.
Even though, oh, I'm sorry.
No, go ahead.
Even though the horse is dead.
Analogy. Andy has horses. You don't have to, pick something else.
As long as you don't wake up with one.
Learned a councilman has far more experience than I do with the state legislature. But as you pointed out, we represent the people of Berlin. And this certainly wouldn't be inclusive or equitable if we just annexed this property to a family's estate and blocked off access for the public. And I just would like the council to go on record with a resolution that we could send out to the legislature and the governor, saying that we oppose this. We don't think it's good for our citizens. And it's about representing our citizens in town. It's not about, you know, setting precedent for the state. Our citizens would have been denied access to this property. And I think we owe it to them to stand up and say, this isn't fair. We don't want to set this precedent.
Andy?
Yeah, I mean, I would agree with what's been stated. You know, I think the reason why we're, we're talking about it here is, I mean, we've gotten letters from the land trust. I was out, you know, with the land trust quite on Sunday doing cleanup for Earth Day. It was a huge topic for everyone there. And, you know, it does affect all the citizen, you know, of the town, whether or not we can have access to this. So, you know, I do think it's worthy of our time. I hope that the bill is dead. That would be great. But I've seen things just come around and resurrect. So hopefully this won't and you know, and it'll be over with, but I, I would rather see us do a resolution to at least state we're not in favor of it. This way, if it does come back around again, I don't know what it does legally, but it at least we as a, as a town, as a, as a unit for the, for the citizens of the town would be saying that we are not for this. It should not happen. So I think there's no harm in doing the resolution, especially if it's going to be dead anyway.
I, I don't have a problem with, with a resolution. I, but that's not how stuff works up there. I mean.
Get that.
I, I get it, Peter, but we're not up here. We're here in town. We're trying to help our citizens.
I understand that. And you did.
That's what we're here for.
And I'm, you know, it's, I'm, I'm just curious too, if it is dead, let's hope it's dead. It seems like it is, but again, we all know till the a lady sings. I won't insult anybody with that, but what happens to the, what you said, and we've all said it and heard it, the outbuildings, I, I would hope the state would go in there and, and how did this happen, first of all, right? I mean, I know it's state, you know, that's state land there, but you got buildings built on state land. Nobody did a survey. Apparently the property owner didn't do anything.
Nobody pulled the permit.
Yeah, nobody pulled permits. I know it's state land that he's on, so it may not have come to Berlin.
Well, Jack assured me.
Yeah.
Excuse me, Representative Fazino assured me that they're going to find out what went on there.
Yeah.
And get those buildings out of there. They don't belong there. He understands that.
But, but, but I guess that the question would be, why didn't they do that beforehand? I mean, I guess that, that's kind of the question.
That's.
No one paid attention beforehand until, you know, in the dark of night, it was going to slip through, let's face it. And in the dark of night, it became the bright day, which now all of a sudden.
That's why they have, it's called a statement of purpose bill.
Yes.
And it doesn't, it's fine, it's trying to find out, I spent two years on the screening committee up there.
Yeah, yeah.
And if these bills are introduced to find out who's ox is being born.
Yeah, I get that. Well, I get it. Yeah, sure.
Once that's known, they don't go anywhere.
Yeah.
I mean, there are hundreds of bills. I put bills in myself that I didn't believe in, but I represent a constituent. And as wacky as they are, I had to put the bill in. I mean, they never went anywhere, but, because my name was on it, but anyway.
No, I, no, we get it, Peter, but now that it is in the light of day where it should be, there's a lot of questions, right? And I hope the investigation.
Some good will come of it.
Yeah, I, I hope so. And, you know, block, I guess the, the saddest thing I heard from one of the residents, we were chatting before a little bit too, would be it, it appeared that even now, the, the resident there was telling people, don't, you know, you can't walk up that trail. You know, that, that was occurring already before this even came to the light of day. And with this bill, you know, proposed, it would have shut access off to a state park, which is amazing in itself, but and shame on the legislature. They have legal counsel. They have attorneys there to look into these things. I know they submit stuff. I, I get what goes on there, but you know, a little, a little homework would be good by our legislators, you know, we do, you know, we do trust them to do the right thing. And certainly I don't think they did it in this case, but the right thing appears, will, will occur now, we hope. In May, by May 8th is what six?
May 8th is our, our last day, so I'm certainly hopeful that this will not go forward as I'm being told by.
Yeah, yeah. All right. So I mean, I think we've professed our dislike and distaste of what occurred here, and I'm glad it did come to light. And the other just little piece of it was it's, it, I don't know. It's, it's sad that our, all of our legislators that represent the town were not informed of it. So that's another bad piece of cooperation from, you know, our Berlin folks that should be working together there. I thought that was occurring, but apparently it doesn't always occur. So, but, you know, where I, where we're at, and we're hoping we've shed enough light on it and it's kind of, you know, we've shamed the folks enough that supported this bill that it won't go forward. But we, we have seen things that we've shamed before in our state, federal and local government that does go forward, so we hope it ends. All right.
So we, resolution tonight?
I mean, we could, if you want to just do a quick one liner, we, you know, the council, I don't know what, what, what councilor, so I don't say the wrong. The one liner?
That's a good idea.
The one liner?
Yeah, I would say we have a resolution, have something documented.
One liner. What do you think? Is that good?
Are you looking for a suggestion?
Yes, absolutely.
I mean, please.
Andy asked a question. I mean, there, what is the, what would the effect of a resolution be? I mean, it really sort of has no
No.
Legal effect to do anything.
It's tantamount to a letter signed by seven residents of the town.
I mean, I think we've done it.
Yeah.
Charlie did it.
You can send, you can have the same effect by sending a copy of the meeting minutes to them.
Right.
Do that too.
Okay, yeah.
Could do that too.
You know.
What, what do you want to do?
I think everybody has valid points and expressed their concern.
Yeah.
That's all we need to do.
I'd like a short, simple message we could send to our legislators and the governor saying, please oppose it. Because they're not going to sit down and go through our whole meeting. Let's just give them a quick.
That is probably true.
You know, message in a form of revolution, resolve that this is a bad idea. Please don't go forward. If you could help us frame it better, I'd appreciate it.
So then make a motion that the council formally resolves that it is opposed to whatever the bill number is.
5520. I've gotten emails. Know it.
The end.
Yeah.
At the end. So that, that's the motion right there. Should we repeat it? Charlie will make the motion. Did we write it? Did we?
What he said.
It's on tape. All right, that's the motion. We have a second?
I'll second that.
It's a motion, a resolution, whatever we want to call it. All right, all is in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? All right, so moved.
Thank you.
So we'll see what happens, folks. Yeah.
Thank you for coming out.
Yeah, thanks for coming out. Appreciate it. Yes, sir.
What is the next step? We print the resolution, give it to who takes it to the state? What happens?
You can send it to the governor's office. You can send it emails to us.
It'll be in the minutes. I guess print that small resolution off in the minutes. It's, 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 it's a gesture. It's, you know, I mean, we don't, we, I don't.
People write to the governor all the time.
Yeah, no, no, no. I mean, I, I get it. We, we've definitely fought it already, understood, but you know.
Perhaps you'd like to send a copy of the resolution to your general assembly representation?
That would be good.
Sure.
To the.
GAE media, the GAE committee where the bill originated.
All right, who sends it? Does Kate send it for us or how does it work?
Maybe Kate could send it to Donna and Donna could circulate it.
Can we do that, Donna?
I could do that.
Yeah. That's what we'll do.
Send it to my office up in Harvard, though. Things get lost in Berlin. I do, you can't, we use this laptop. Issues, can't drop down. And Peter, anytime you have a question about the way I vote, feel free to reach out to me.
All right. All right, so let's move on to our.
Regular scheduled program?
Yes, agenda item number one.
Yes. So Mr. Mayor, a couple of meetings ago, you had asked, you had had some questions about animal control.
Yes.
We followed up with the Jennifer, who's charge of animal control.
Yes.
Put an email together, which I circulated. And after you received it, you said you'd like to put it back on the agenda to have further discussion. So I have Jen Choa with me and also the two animal control officers.
Oh, nice.
To answer any questions.
Absolutely. Hi, Jen, how are you?
How are you?
Good.
Sure. So, yeah, I ended up watching that council meetings instead of just trying to figure it out.
Okay.
And went through, I wrote the two-page email with anything that was brought up. I wanted to make sure I gave you guys a full scope of what the department does. But I'm here. Jan and Kate are here. In case I can't answer them, any questions, concerns you guys have, we're more than welcome to field them.
And we appreciate the information. We appreciate the work our animal control officers do as well. So thank you guys for being here. I know you probably have better places to be, although it's fun here, right? Isn't it fun? Yeah, we have a lot of fun here, yeah.
It's an experience.
It's an experience. Let's leave it that. It's an experience. Yeah, we're not sure about fun or not fun, but I, we'll, we'll leave it as an experience. Yeah, no comment on that. No, I, we, we understand it's busy in town for our animal control staff. And I, and I see, you know, after reading through this information, I do see where, you know, we're, we're doing stuff that, responding to things we, we should be. And a couple of questions I have, I, so I have heard lately, and I know Jan is here. I, I have had, I, I got to tell you, a couple complaints recently from folks. One was up at Bicentennial. I thought we had kind of put that to rest, Bicentennial with our dog park and all that. But one of the neighbors up there, because I run up through there, so fortunately, sometimes they're out early in the morning too, even though I'm early. But, so they grab, I'm running by, but they're walking, taking walks too. They've seen a, a, I guess, I think it, it settled down for a while when we did the, you know, when we, we had the, we voted the dog park be moved and all that. But now, apparently according to this person anyway, it stepped up up there, you know, as far as folks are there with dogs running around.
Weather coming.
Yeah, I think that's probably what's happened. The weather's nice this year and, you know, it's kind of floated away all the publicity about the dog park. You can't do it up there. It got to be on leash. So, so she said there's a lot of folks back up around there. So just to, you know, if you could spend some more time up there and see if that is in, yeah, and I'm just taking their word, you know, I, I haven't seen it myself, but.
And just to let you know that patrols, so ever since the dog park, actually before the dog park.
Yeah.
Leash ordinance came first.
Yeah.
Right?
Yes.
Once the lead ordinance was put in place.
Yeah.
Patroling got stepped up big time.
Yeah.
Pistol Creek and Bicentennial being the two main areas that the ladies do patrol.
Right.
I'm not going to say every day because dealing with call out, dealing with reports and incidents and taking care of the animals inside the facility and dealing with people coming in, looking at adoptions, everything is always going to take priority. But patrols are happening on a regular basis and they take logs every time that they do go out. They tell me what facility they went to. They tell me what they saw. The ones that I've looked at recently are, they are constantly seeing dogs on leashes at Pistol Creek, Bicentennial. They're also looking at Timberland.
Good.
They're also patrolling Sage Park and Veterans Park, because we did get some complaints about that. So we've picked up patrols at Veterans Park too. So they are out there. They're not out there every day. They're not out there outside their work hours, obviously. But we can definitely, now that you're getting complaints, absolutely pick up patrols in those areas.
Yeah.
Especially now that's getting nicer.
Appreciate that, yeah. And, and then also Pistol Creek, I mean, I've seen it there myself. I, I don't know what the, I, I don't know what the deal is with people, what they do, but, and I know, I guess they're sort of trying to pick up after their dogs. But then they, as you, I'm sure have seen at Pistol Creek, they throw the, the bag with the, with the cleanup. They're hanging off trees. They're hanging, they're in the woods. I just shake my head when you walk through there once in a while. I don't go there often either, but every time I go there, there's just bags laying all over the place. I don't know what you do with that, quite frankly. But I know we got trashcans there. I.
Fence. We could.
Is it?
Fractions, but you have to see it.
You got to catch them. No, I get it, and it's hard to do. Yeah, it's, it's, yeah, it looks like it's been there. I mean, it's, it's hanging off trees. I just, I'm not sure. I've seen that in many other parks I've walked through.
There's a park in Meriden that's like.
The same thing, yeah.
Red Bridge Trail, you can just see them on the.
And we have enough, right? There's trashcans there. There.
Trashcan.
Yeah, I don't know what, what the deal is with that. I mean, it's, so it's just, you know, and I have, I had a couple of people. And I mean, I've seen that myself, but I've had a couple of people felt the need to send me pictures of it, which was lovely to get. But, you know, again, I, I understand it. It's, it's not nice and.
If you don't catch them in the act, it's.
Agreed, agreed. And I don't know if there's any way to step up those patrols? And I, you know, I, I certainly see with the information you submitted that, you know, there's other things to do. So I, I don't know if there is a way to, at least maybe now that the nice weather started, maybe to send a message early, you know, maybe.
Did that last year.
Did you? Okay.
I, I, I'm a numbers person. I'm OCD about that. So I did look at all my 2023 logs that they have filled out. In March, they patrolled 28 out of 31 days. In April, 24 out of 30, May, 24 out of 31. So once it started getting warmer, we did up our.
Stepped it up. Okay, that's good.
You know, that's something, as long as we're not getting killed with dog bites with lately, that's all we were getting.
Yeah, dog bites?
Yeah.
Lot of dog bites lately? Really, huh?
Lot of raccoons. So, yeah, sick raccoon, like three in the last two weeks or something.
Huh. Wow. Oh, okay, yeah. All right, no, I mean, I get it. There's a lot to do, but, so, yeah, so that's just my, my thoughts on it, you know, to send a message early in the year. Maybe it follows through, you know, through the nice weather. I, I don't know.
Yeah.
It's worth, it's worth taking a shot, I think. Yeah. What do, what do you folks think? Anything with your thoughts looking through this? Just do the best you can. I know it's not easy and I wish, you know, people would follow the rules. We all wish.
Curious for safety.
Yeah.
Where are the radio situation at?
Yeah, actually, there was, yeah, I was going to mention that too.
So radios, we did have, when you guys were talking at that meeting with the chief on the phone, we actually already had radios in place.
Right, that's right. You said that here, right?
We received radios.
Yeah.
I can't remember how long ago. It was, it's been a while. Jimmy Simons had some funds in his budget and he hooked us up with radios. He has us on a channel that is always monitored, but does not conflict with what dispatch is getting it.
Okay, yeah.
God forbid something happens when they're out on a call and they need to radio in. It is monitored and they can get somebody out there right away. I forget what the name.
So they, they would hear, God forbid, something occurred and our, one of our officers needed help, you know, that's, that's my concern. You know, you're by yourself out there and, you know, God only knows what happens.
And also, since this email's been sent, we do have GPS in both their vehicles.
Oh, great. Okay, that's good. Yeah, no, I mean, it's.
Monitor that and I can monitor.
Oh, good. Okay, good. Yeah, I mean, that, you know, being out there alone in today's world or in any world that we're in, you know, whatever time. You know, whatever, whatever time it's been, it's not good to be alone out there for someone enforcing whatever statute you're enforcing. People get, as we know, with their animals are, yes, very attached and don't like to be bothered, but. So, all right, that's good. That, that's a safety concern that, that I think we all had, right?
Yeah.
So any other questions, folks?
No.
Anything? We good?
I just want to say.
Yes, absolutely.
I know I'm not law enforcement, and I know we all think animal control belongs in law enforcement, and I may not disagree with you. They may not even disagree with you at the time. But I, I've learned so much in these last three years about animal control. I really feel like I have a good handle on things and if there's ever anything you guys have questions about, if you have someone complaining, send them my way. I get angry. People call me all the time. I afford a. Send them my way. I get angry. People call me all the time. I afford apartments, and they're all community-based apartments, so I'm used to it.
Yeah.
I also want to say that they do a phenomenal job. I've actually recently, in the last month, gotten three calls complimenting the work that they do over at Animal Control. So I do want to mention that, you know, everybody finds things to complain about, especially in towns and residents. But there's good things, too, and they are doing a good job out there.
Well, I appreciate that. I, I mean, I guess there's no way to get them back under the police department. I know, I know there is some old consent agreement that's out there from years ago, but that's really the place that just about every town has animal control. And there's no way to, for that to happen, I don't know.
In the current situation, no.
Yeah.
And we've actually found out that it's quite a bit more than we thought. I'm trying to get a number on it as to how many are actually not under the police department. There's quite a few that are actually under the town. We found out from our regional animal control officer.
Yeah. As long as they have that emergency channel, that's, that's probably the main thing. And as, and as long as wherever that town was, there's not an elephant running, running through the town, like wherever that was on the news the other day. So, so hopefully, yeah, some town, it got away from the circus, I guess, and just decided to run through the town, out west, out west somewhere. But we haven't seen that yet here, but, you know, you never know. Circus comes through. I don't know if they all have elephants anymore, but it was kind of interesting. So I don't know what they did. They finally corralled it somehow. But anyway, so, all right, well, we appreciate the report. Thank you, ladies, for being here. Thank you. Thank you, Jen.
Long as they're safe, Jen.
That is the key. We were most concerned with the GPS and the radio is, glad to hear that. Thank you.
All right. Moving to agenda item number two, there was a replacement. Agenda item number two should have copies with it. Mr. Mahoney added some additional language, it's time-sensitive nature. And this has to do with the construction administration of design of sidewalks, as well as what we added was that some work that we would like to do with the transportation alternative grants that's coming up. There are three sections to it. I'll have Jim walk you through. We have discussed these connectivity some point before, but a couple of moving parts here. So Jim, over to you.
Thank you. So starting with the basics, the council authorized funds for consulting services relating to two sidewalk projects. The first is a community connectivity grant that we received at the end of 2023 for $780,000. And we needed construction administration and bidding assistance services for that. And the second, per our more recent conversations, was to prepare plans for a second project that would be the subject of our next community connectivity grant application. Because we, you know, we got very favorable response from Department of Transportation in terms of having the plans in place. It puts us in a much better competitive position. The council approved funds for that. And so we did a joint RFP for both projects at the same time, had a selection committee, Jim Horrible, Chris, Alexa. They've, they're recommending WMC. We had two bidders on both. They recommended WMC for both. WMC has done work for us on previous projects, submitted, you know, competitive fee proposals that are less than our, you know, budgeted amounts for both of those projects, and we've been satisfied with their work. So, so that's the basics. And then the, the other thing was, while we started to work on this, the Capital Region Council of Governments came out with a new request for proposals for transportation alternatives grants. And this would allow us to apply for actually up to $3.2 million for additional transportation improvements. Could be sidewalks, pedestrian safety, crosswalks, bike, bike improvements, that sort of thing. And so it has a application deadline of May 13th. So we're starting to work on that project as well, and we thought that a lot of this additional project could be centered on sidewalks. And we've, we've done some analysis of the existing sidewalk network and, and identified that a priority would be in our, you know, what our proposed priority would be, would be sidewalks in the vicinity of schools. We have, of course, the three-school cluster of McGee, Willard, and the Berlin, Berlin High School in a very, in a close, close area. Sidewalks around there where we have, again, disconnected sidewalks where we can make connections to help kids get to school, also get to the playing fields at all these locations. And there's also, you know, sidewalks that would be beneficial, both at Hubbard and Grizzle, to connect more students into the sidewalk, in, into those facilities. Also possibly, you know, again, make the trip to school safer for folks, possibly create situations where, where children can walk to school rather than be bused to school, short distances, things of that nature. So we got a proposal from, from WMC on that, and we would propose to add additional $10,000 to their design work to look at these, this larger sidewalk network and help us come up with concept plans and cost estimates that we could make part of our transportation alternatives grant application. Then I will come back, you know, with more specifics on that at your next meeting. But again, the key thing, I think, on the transportation alternatives grant is that it is a bigger grant program, and we can apply for more money, but it does have a 20% match requirement. So this would be, you know, we typically have been doing projects, you know, now in the $800,000 range. So if we went up to, again, four times that amount, 3.2 million would be the maximum grant we could apply for, but we'd have to come up with the 20%, with a 20% match. So if the council has any response, you know, or I, feedback at this point in terms of, you know, whether you would be receptive to applying for a larger grant. It would be cost-effective, I think, for us to do, to try to do the areas around all the schools at the same time and more effect, cost-effective from a administrative point of view from town staff, I believe, as well. This grant program, again, is kind of more transportation alternatives is really geared toward the bigger projects that are not going to fit in as well with the connectivity and such that are in that $800,000 range. So I think it would give us a more competitive application also. So, you know, first action is to, you know, obviously approve these, the consultant hirings for these two projects, and also if the council has, has any feedback or wants to engage in a dialogue about what I, what ideas and thoughts you might have on this transportation alternatives grant and whether you're receptive to applying for a larger grant, whether it's $2 million, $3 million to, to try to do as many of those sidewalks as we could at the same time.
Thank you, Jim. Yeah, if anyone has questions, I don't, you know, yeah, we don't want a larger grant. No, I'm just kidding. I, 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 I would say, yeah, me too, but I, I obviously, I think that's a great suggestion. Certainly, the more, you know, we can get these projects done together and, and less disruption, of course. And the more grant, grant funding we can get, the happier we will all be, as will our residents, so.
Do have a.
Yes, yeah, absolutely.
Agreed that, you know, having the sidewalks near the schools is a, is a great idea. All for that. I just didn't know if there were any other areas that maybe sidewalks would be needed that we've heard from, say, some of the senior citizens or something like that, that they would like to walk to point A and B, but there's no sidewalk. So if they have a walker, they can't go on the grass or things like that. And I just want to take that into consideration as well.
Sure.
And could I ask a piggyback question that's sort of on yours as well? And then this list of five, if we were to request a larger grant, would there be additional locations, I guess, that would appear in the list?
The list of five is what we already have grant money to. So, and then the design, we've already, we discussed the design of the section on Kensington Road from Carriage to Norton and on Four-Rod Road from Norton to Wildemere. So that was the basic design. But then, then we looked at, again, with this transportation alternatives grant, we've looked across town at other sidewalk segments. I'll, I'll fill you in on the details and hopefully have maps for you for the next meeting. But, yeah, we looked at the big picture. I'm saying we focused on the schools, but it's not exclusively to the schools. And certainly, if anybody has any specific areas in mind, please let me know. But we're looking at, we're looking especially at neighborhoods where there's, you know, over time, the planning and zoning commission required sidewalks for new subdivisions. So we have a lot of areas with, with internal sidewalks for subdivisions. But then there's disconnects between those sidewalks and sidewalks that are relatively nearby that would get people, you know,
Downtown.
Into Main Street, to downtown, to the schools, to the athletic fields or the open spaces and stuff. So now trying to put the pieces together, and it's a step-by-step process. But, yeah, we, we, I worked, I started to work with engineering, and we've identified like 2,500 linear feet of sidewalk that, that we think, you know, could be beneficially added, but we can certainly come up with other ideas. I think we still have room to grow within the grant allocation. So please send, send us any suggestions, and we'll come back with specifics at the May meeting.
Perfect. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, Jim. We appreciate that. Any other comments or questions? Yes, yes.
So I think I'm supporting the spending $10,000 more to try and get these concept plans and design.
Sure.
Next week, week after, if you decide, decide as a governing body, we don't want to apply for 3.2 or 2 million. That's a conversation we need to have. 3.2 is 640,000. We don't have it, so we need to make an appropriation for that.
Right, right.
Or apply for a smaller grant, but it's not money wasted, because we can use that in the future when we do more connectivity and other grant programs. Jim will have that as a tool to work with.
Right, yeah.
And he can share that with the maps. Hopefully, we'll have some maps. Visuals are much better for you to see what's happening. And then we can decide whether we want to do all or half or nothing, but it's an opportunity.
Yeah, it sounds like it. Yeah, no, it sounds. Yeah, it sounds like a great opportunity. Okay, so with that, we'll go ahead, and I think we have a couple of motions on this one.
Move to authorize the town manager to enter a contract with WMC consulting engineers of $41,800 and change orders up to $8,360 for total contracts not to exceed the amount of $50,160 with community conductivity construction sidewalk project. This contract is funded from the grant road improvement account.
Thank you. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, so moved. Second motion?
Move to authorize the town manager to enter a contract with WMC consulting engineers of $38,000 and change orders up to $7,600 plus $10,000 for additional sidewalk project concept plans and cost estimates for total contract not to exceed amount of $55,600 for the community conductivity sidewalk design project and for additional sidewalk concept plans and their cost estimates. This contract is to be funded from the community conductivity grant account.
Take a second on that? Thank you. Any other comments or questions? Hearing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? All right, so moved.
Thank you. Thank you, Jim.
Thanks, Jim.
Next three agenda items are Timbaland.
Oh, I see that.
Aguero's here. The first one is to make a budget transfer. Who's that? Paul, do you have something in the background?
Hi, Rosa.
Paul, do you have a TV or anything in the background?
Hold on one second, Rosa, sorry. Rosa, can you hear me better now?
We're, we're good. So I'll, I'll send it over to you to explain the budget transfer, agenda item number three.
Sure. We've had to send out more of our tar equipment out for repair and service this year. So with that, we went over our maintenance and repair account. So we're requesting a budget transfer of $16,000 from three different accounts, 6,100 from computer support, 2,900 from internet service, and 7,000 from vehicle fuel. So tonight, we're asking to move to approve the budget transfer of 16,000 from those three accounts to the maintenance repair account, as this is the best interest for the town.
Okay.
Good promotion?
Good from, we're all good? Yeah, we're good for motion, yes.
Move to approve the budget transfer of $16,000 to the maintenance and repair account, 6,100 from the computer support account, 2,900 from internet services account, and 7,000 from the vehicle fuel account.
Take a second. Thank you. Thank you, Jen. Any other comments or questions?
Yeah, by moving this money, is that going to hinder these other accounts? Or do you do the research to find out what, where your balances are going to be? So you're not going to be hindering the other accounts by moving this money?
Correct. We did our due diligence in those three accounts to make sure we have enough for the rest of the year. We did changes in those accounts earlier in the year that we were saving money on. So we were able to move those funds over comfortably for the rest of the year.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, any other concerns or questions?
Just.
Yes.
Big part of it, we changed our internet service provider, saved the amount of money from here. So we have the money to do other things. And you will notice a lot of these things that machinery and equipment, they're breaking a lot more often now. We're trying to replace with new ones. We've done one or two. But it is going to be a challenge to put things together because they're old.
Yeah.
It's old. So Timbaland, it worked within their budget, all the, you know, any, any oil expenditures, because the ordinance, they can exceed the revenues that they bring in. Though the last few years, we have done well. Christians can use that money to do it. But just want to make a note of it, that you're going to see more and more things breaking, that they're getting old every year. And they're expensive to replace.
Yeah, people, I mean, things and people break when they get older, I guess, so we'll try to.
All right. So, sorry.
All right, we're good. So go ahead and take a motion.
Move to increase the authorization to purchase a used John Deere mower from $35,000 to $40,000.
Second on that. Any other questions? Now, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? All right, so moved. Yeah.
Agenda item number two is a bid waiver, since we are going over the $25,000 threshold, and also it is doing business with the sole source provider.
So this kind of goes back to having old equipment and, you know, having a hard time finding parts and getting them fixed. So Turf, Turf Product, they're our main provider for Toro equipment, and 90% of ours, of our inventory is Toro. So we use them as a sole provider account, and with that, we're going over the 25,000 threshold. So we're asking the town to waive the bidding procedure for Turf Products Corp. As a sole provider for Toro parts, and we won't go over $42,000 with that.
There any questions, folks? Any questions?
No.
All right, hearing none. Go ahead and take a motion, Charlie.
Move to waive the town's bidding procedure for Turf Products Corporation. Is there a sole source provider for Toro parts and service? The amount not to exceed $42,000. This is in the best interest of the town.
Take a second on that? Thank you very much. Any other comments or questions? Now, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? All right, so moved.
Right, thank you.
Thank you so much.
Number five is, again, you probably remember, we, we're coming back to you. We've got approval for $35,000 to buy a used Grinch mower, but that deal fell apart. Now we're going to buy another one, which is used, but for. Now we're going to buy another one which is used but for forty. What happened to Sal?
Oh, maybe you thought we were.
I read them out of order and then we just.
Oh, you know what, Charlie? I I thought so because that was, right? I'm looking at it and I say, wait a minute, wait a minute.
We argued the wrong bill. All right.
That never happens here.
We approved both of those already. I'm sorry.
That's okay.
It's okay.
He's going to shoot me.
But just so that, just for the record.
Yeah.
Came to you to buy a used mower thirty-five.
Yeah, I remember we.
Not available.
Right.
Going for another one.
We talked about that, yeah. I I remember that.
So.
Yeah.
You all good uh from your N K? You have?
Yeah.
All right. All right, agenda item number six. Everybody is online to talk about this. This has to do with uh we probably a few months ago, we've been through a whole uh R F P process and uh because we are not pleased with Mission Square, the folks who manage the town's retirement program and.
Oh, you're not ha- we're not happy with the?
No, no.
No, huh?
Selected Voya, you probably remember this about six months ago.
Yeah, that's right. We did change, yeah.
But with Voya, um, they also review all of the plan documents and uh which is a tree here.
Yes, we see that, but.
And uh I feel bad, uh very generous corporation council, then through all of this. And um had some couple of changes, but in general, it's the same one, but it's Voya wants to do their due diligence.
Sure.
So um.
Understood.
Paula, anything you want to add?
Correct. Um, that's pretty much what they've done is just transitioned the current Mission Square documents. Sorry, my video is not working for some reason. I'm not sure why. Um, to the Voya.
Are we sure it's you, Paula?
It's me, I swear. I don't.
It's not a A I sound alike. I mean, I'm.
Hint, stop video, but I'm not popping up. I don't know why.
Okay, we're good.
Yeah. That's basically what that we're doing is just transitioning all of the current Mission Square plan documents to the Voya format. Um, so it's pretty straightforward. The only real two significant changes that we made, the first one, um, we are now going to allow current employees to be able to withdraw or transfer funds at the age of fifty-nine and a half, which is pretty big because currently, right now, if you're an active employee, you cannot touch those funds at all, period. The only way that you can access them is to either, you know, uh retire or leave the town of Berlin. Um, so this was something that Voya offered. Uh, it didn't cost us anything in addition to what, you know, we had already agreed on. Um, and we thought it would be a great way for folks to kind of plan for retirement sooner by being able to transfer funds, withdraw, et cetera. So I just wanted to point that out. That is something that's different from what we currently have. And then the second piece is we do not allow any loans at all, regardless if it's the four oh one, four fifty-seven. But with Voya, we will now be able to do loans just for hardship cases such as domestic violence or natural disasters. And that's again, different from what we currently have. Currently, you can't take out loans for anything. This would just allow those scenarios. And that's pretty much it.
Okay, okay. So so they couldn't do any uh lo- you couldn't never do any loans out of this program, the the past, the the old program or withdraw?
Right.
I would add, in general, defined contributions plan, they're consistent.
Yes.
Withdraw forty-nine and a half. I mean, you could be eighty here and you can't still withdraw anything.
Right.
Right.
Which is.
Yeah, yeah.
Uh, even if you're part-time, you can withdraw anything.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. No, no, that does seem a bit odd.
Then the loan provision is there in a lot of defined contribution plans for hardships.
Right. Oh, yeah, absolutely. Yeah, no, 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 that's uh, I think it's an improvement. I I I'm surprised we.
The loan regi- that's only for hardships. So is that our, by our standards or is that per Voya's standards?
Well, there was different options and I actually asked, um, coming from the town of Madison, you know, we allowed uh hardship loans for employees in general. You still had to apply for it. So I had asked, um, you know, why that wasn't a thing here. But um when I spoke to Denise, she had said that not only the attorneys, but Mission Square at the time had recommended that they don't allow that. Um, because what happens is employees end up using that to just take out loans for random things and they really shouldn't be accessing it just for regular items. So um this was one of the offerings that Voya had that just specifies hardships regarding domestic violence or natural disaster um that would allow them to now take out uh, you know, a loan if they needed to.
So for example, if they they're transmitting blows, that's not a.
Yeah.
Or down payment on the house if you really want to.
Yeah.
But they can't do that in this case. No.
No.
Yeah, a lot of them do a lot more. I don't know many ones. I'm familiar with do that, but.
Previous life I managed these.
Yeah.
Approvals and all that and it it is, people don't realize sometimes they say it's hardship and they pick money out early on. It's not really a hardship.
Right.
Really hurts them in the long run.
It does. I agree.
So you want to limit it, but hardships and this is what they've offered.
Yeah.
And I will say that I saw the same thing in in Madison when I was there. A lot of folks were just using it almost as a savings account because they're like, oh, I could just pay it back and not looking at it as a retirement fund.
Right. Yeah, I do see that too. It's just hardships in the eyes of the beholder though sometimes, but.
Going to say that it's kind of.
What what's not my hardship might be somebody else's, but I I get it. I mean, we don't want them to ruin their retirement either. But uh uh sometimes I I don't know, very divided on that. It's their money though. So if they want to wreck something for their future, I don't, you know, it's it's their money they put in. I know there's the match too, but.
And just keeping in mind that they, we do not offer loans now. So even under Mission Square, that is not, right, it's not something that they're allowed to do currently.
Gotcha. We've we've expanded it a little bit, at least from that, yes. No, I I I I get that, yeah. And you could do the withdrawal now too, right, which we never had.
Right, which I I do think that is a massive benefit. Um, again, we do have a a older demographic in Berlin, so I'm hoping that this will allow folks to, you know, kind of plan the retirement a little bit earlier.
Yeah, yeah, okay. No, that's that sounds good. I think overall seems like a right, great improvement, I think. Yeah, yeah, good. Good, okay. If there's no other questions, appreciate it, Paula.
No problem.
Uh, we got, we got three motions here, I guess, so go ahead and.
Move to approve a resolution to adopt the revised Voya four, five, seven adoption agreement plan document.
Second on that? Thank you, Donna. Um, any other questions? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed. All right, so moved. Two?
Move to approve a resolution to adopt revised Voya four, zero, one town adoption agreement plan document.
Second. Thank you. Hearing no other comments. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed. All right, so moved. Number three.
Move to approve a resolution to adopt revised Voya town manager four, zero, one adoption agreement plan document.
Second on that. Thank you. Uh, hearing no other comments. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed. All right, so moved.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Paula.
Agenda item number seven.
Yes, yep.
On early voting, registrars are not here, but town clerk is going to uh be the registrar today.
Oh.
About this item.
Well, we we have a good relationship.
Yeah, we guys get along.
With the referendum right now that I I told him that this is an easy one. All it is, is that they have to um again, bring it forth to you. And um because we're a population of over twenty thousand, that you allow us to have one voting, um early voting poll in place if we have a primary in August. And it worked out fine for the the two primaries in February. I'm sorry. That's going back to when I first started um in um, it used to be in February, in um April. So I think it's a, it it worked. So, great.
Good, okay. Any questions, concerns? We 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 do one voting place for the referendum too, right? Why, why?
We have, um, according to the charter, we have all three polling places open for the referendum.
Jeff, is that, that's the way it is? It's in the charter for three? Okay.
And not only that, have to do it from six A M. to eight.
Yeah, I know. That seems like such a waste with the turnout. That's why. I mean, I don't mean it's a waste, but but to have three places open six to eight for.
I think we just talked about it. So I think it's on page twenty-four of the charter.
Yeah, really?
Not that you looked.
Not that you checked it out? You never checked it out? Yeah, that's too bad. You know, really a waste.
At some point, we got to discuss reopening that charter.
Oh, yeah. What a fun time that'll be, Peter. Yeah, not again. Look at what happened last time.
I'll share it on my way out.
I I, yeah, I mean, I don't disagree with you. There's that. It it was unfortunate last time. We had some language fixes, right? So many, and I know there was one, you know, issue that was the catalyst for the probably people voting it down. It's a shame they didn't look at the rest of it and they typically don't because there was a lot of fixes that Attorney DiNafrio and town had worked, looked, looked on, you know, there was very, you know, very positive things. But I agree, there's fixes we need to make. And a lot of that was, right, a lot of it were just language fixes, but.
It was a lot of just.
Good, yeah.
Lot of, lot of cleanup.
Yeah, a lot of good stuff that we.
Baby got thrown out with the bathwater.
Yeah, that's.
Joining the ox and the horse and the elephant.
How many years ago?
Two years.
Uh, two years ago, yes. Oh, yes, it's such a joyful thing to.
Have a good time.
It's a good time. It's a good time. But maybe we can, yes. Maybe you need, you need to go through it and experience it and have fun, right?
Have to like the full range of the experience.
It's a good rate to get rid of me. I'll do it on the way out.
Yeah, there you go. Peter, you want to handle this? Yeah, I'll handle it. We'll we'll make some good suggestions here, yeah. All right, well, yeah, that's something we could do. But anyway, okay, so this is great. So we'll go ahead and take a uh, no more, any discussion on this? We're good? Take a motion. All those are up.
This isn't really a motion, is it?
Uh, no, I guess it's not really. It's not a motion, is it? We're just gonna agree on?
Going to, if you can, that's what you did last time.
Yeah.
To just move that.
Oh, yeah.
Your your.
We.
Move to have one poll in place for early voting.
Okay.
Um, for the twenty-twenty-four August primaries, if that helps.
Yes, that's the motion right there. Look at that. So moved. Uh, um, second. All right, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed. All right, so moved. Good. All right, thank you. That's good.
Thank you.
Yeah, that's that's good saving, right? Resources or just.
Yeah, well, you know what the biggest thing is? You have to remember, and I don't know what's going to happen, you know, November, but.
Yeah.
Um, they have to have their whole computer system set up. So it has to, we had to have I T. come in and set everything up also in the um Doc Macintosh system. So it's not one thing where you can just pick it up and carry it someplace.
It's a lot, yeah, I know.
Very detailed.
Mel, all right, we'll do the best we can. What did the state say? No money this year for the uh early elections? Let's see what they do next year. Much more they could dump on the towns for funding anyway, right? Unfortunately, with a lot of things. All right, where are we at? Where are, where are we at? Appointments?
Yeah.
We are with appointments. Okay. So we have, what do we have here? We've got uh, so the first, so we have two for the commission on the aging. Looking at these two, it's a difficult choice. Um, lady has certainly been in town a very long time. The lady has not been in town a long time, but does have extensive experience. Uh, it's.
They have one opening?
I think there's only one opening, right? Kate, for this one?
And Ms. Gombach spoke in favor of the Geraldine Russell.
She did. She did. Yes, she did. I don't know. I mean, I wish we had a little bit more on uh this Russell. I know the time in town counts to some extent, but I don't know. I mean, and I know they're both one of each party, but I'm trying to honestly go not to look at that. I I sometimes I think, and you know, probably they'll run me out of town on a rail when I say this, but sometimes I think it's nice to bring a different viewpoint in from folks that lived other places. And she obviously volunteered in other places and did other things. I I I don't know. I just.
I mean, she didn't do that for the young gentleman that was applying for planning and zoning though.
Yes, I I agree. I agree.
I mean, it could be something that some time you might want to look at as far as, especially when you don't know.
Yeah.
Individuals.
Yeah, yeah.
Either um you have a conversation with them or they come here.
Yeah, I I, yeah.
Kind of at least give you a background.
Yeah. Yeah, because it's hard. I mean, you know, you want to get the right person. I don't care. Yeah, I mean, that's what we want to do ultimately.
This is, does this Russell have any volunteer? It's no volunteer experience, huh?
Well, we don't, well, it said, she says no community involvement. You're right.
It's difficult.
You don't even know what she was doing, living.
She has retired.
No.
If you would like, I can reach out to her and ask her more questions, but.
You know what? Could we just do that? Because I I want to be fair to both of them. I I, you know, I I I think that's a, I think that's the right thing to do just to get a little bit fuller picture of, and and I know, you know, um.
Would you like them to come to the next council?
Uh.
Would you like to just send me your questions and I'll get the answers?
Yeah, just just, I mean, um.
I wouldn't want to put them on the spot.
No, I don't want to do that to them. I don't think that's right. But but I think just a, just a little bit more info. Yes, I I I think that would, and I know, I know Barbara spoke for her and I I, you know, we we, that carries weight, of course, as well.
See what a volunteer experience is.
Yeah, volunteer background, uh, you know, not.
Already attending the meetings, not even being on the commission.
Yeah.
Doesn't want to.
Yeah.
I did get a phone call from um.
Does it say that somewhere?
That's what, that's what Ms. Gombach said.
Oh, Barbara said that. Barbara said that. Yeah, 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 yeah.
That um they would like, that she was willing to give more of a um a resume.
Yeah.
Realizing that the other person had. And I said, well, the meeting's tonight. If you can get it in, great. If not.
Yeah.
It will be, but so I I think that she can get me something.
Okay, I think that's fine. Is that, is that, is that fair? That's fair, right? Yeah, I mean, let's just see.
She already has a resume. You can just get it.
Yeah, we just have to get it. I'm sure she probably has one, so uh, all right, is that fair? Okay, good. Yeah, no.
Good idea.
Trying to, try, we try and do the right thing here. Not always easy, but uh.
And we don't always do.
And we don't always do. Well, whatever. Well, I like to think we do most of the time. I I hope ninety-five to ninety-nine percent of the time we get the right thing done, right?
Yep.
We do try. We do our best. All right, so, okay, what do we got next? Conservation Commission? And we only have the one. Uh, and is that the last opening left?
No, there's two on conservation. Both of them are for alternate.
Okay, all right. Well, that's good. So we have room for another person. Yeah, okay. All right, so we'll go ahead and open the nomination for the Conservation Commission. Nominate.
Nominate Jason Alia.
Yeah.
Alher.
Yeah.
The Conservation Commission.
Okay, thank you. Uh, any other nominations for this position? Hearing none, we'll close the nominations, take a vote. All is in favor. Jason?
Aye.
Opposed. All right, so moved. And I know this one's been hanging around, right, for a while? And I know Mr. Van Sant has been, has applied. So and looking at the other ones now that they come in, but it looks like, so this is the one that's got to be a non-golfer, right, Kate?
Yeah.
So it, does it look like to me, Mr. Van Sant is the non-golfer, right?
Yeah.
Okay, I just, because we didn't, I don't think we had all these. And that's, that's the only spot, right?
Right.
Yeah, okay.
I explained last time is that I want you to see them, know that they were there, but.
Okay.
They're not really qualified as far as to fill this position.
Okay, and and he's been there lingering for a while, so I apologize to him for that. But all right, so let's go ahead and uh.
We have two, right?
Is there another one? Oh, there's a.
Has to be a non-golfer in the other two applications or.
I'd be on.
Actually, there's a third, there's another one. You're right, there is this third one too now. Oh, boy, okay. Golf commission pending. John resident, retire and actually a number of years in Brown.
Really can't tell.
Oh, I can't tell.
No, I'd have been a golfer at Timberland.
Where's that? Where's that? On the back, on the back of his? So, oh, all right.
Takes care of that.
Yeah, see, we're those golfers. We don't want those golfers. We don't want all golfers on there, which makes sense, right? To have a kind of a little bit of a different viewpoint, perhaps.
We changed the ordinance to get a different perspective.
Yeah.
That they were all not.
Yeah, no, I think that's a good thing. So, so, okay, so Mr. Lucas, so we'll go ahead and take a nomination for the non-golfer spot on the golf.
I nominate Mr. Lucas Van Zant for the non-golfer spot on the golf commission.
All right, thank you. Uh, any other nominations for that position? Uh, we have other folks interested, but they appear to be golfers, so we'll go ahead and if there's no others, we'll go ahead and close the nominations. And all is in favor of Lucas? Aye?
Aye.
Opposed. All right, so moved. Welcome to the golf commission. Sure, he'll have a fun time.
All right, golf.
He won't be golfing.
He won't be golfing though. Yes, well, that's uh, that that's interesting. Yeah, that's it. Okay, we're, we're, we're going now to our town manager's report.
Yep, sir. Very briefly, some quick updates. Just uh, we're following up with the state on the status of the H V A C grain for the. Just, uh, we're following up with the state on the status of the HVAC grain for the.
Oh, yes. Oh, yeah.
Pushed their decision to May now.
Hmm.
April, so that's all we know. Won't say whether it's May beginning or end. It's May.
In May, okay.
So, well, Ashley, pretty good. She follows up.
Yeah, she's.
We'll we'll get back to that one. Uh, update on Brightfeeds. I think I told you they were going to set up a hotline.
Oh, yeah, you said that.
They have set up a hotline, but I have called them on two, if not three different occasions when I'm around town and I have got the smell.
Okay.
Comes out of once and Brightfeed once off here, once right in front of Town Hall, once in front of Starbucks. So I've told them, but I don't know whether it's coming from there, but it's the same smell.
Yeah.
I found in front of Brightfield, right? So they are, they have, uh, established a hotline. So asking everyone to call the hotline and what they're going to do is dispatch someone immediately to that location, mark the location, record it so that they can get a sense of where it's coming.
Yeah.
But, you know, and they're trying to, they're working with deep, they're trying to locate this, you know, solve the problem if possible. But, uh.
It was in front of Town Hall. You smelled it?
Very light.
Little bit? Really, huh?
I was like, what is that?
Really? That's kind of weird. It's pretty far away. And Starbucks too, yeah.
We are doing the ribbon cutting and I'm.
Oh, no, really?
Next to a person, I'm thinking smell like.
Sorry, I missed that ribbon cutting then. Sorry about that. Yeah, yeah.
It was a good ribbon cut.
I know it was good. Yeah, I tried to.
Progress, the good thing is they are, uh, working on it. They are, they really want to solve this. They don't want to be on the.
Yeah, no, they're working on it.
So I'll keep you posted as to what goes on.
No, they're very impressive with it, honestly. I I I don't think it's often we, you know, we find problems like that and then, you know, the folks really stepped up, yeah.
Difficult thing to quantify and measure.
Yeah, that's different. Yeah, the smell is.
It smells like.
Direction of the wind, who knows? Yeah. Well, yeah, that too, yeah.
Well, bad like east or like dough or something like that.
Huh.
You know?
Yeah.
It's it's not pleasant.
Smell it? Have you smelled?
I've smelled it down near.
Pleasant.
Yeah, no.
I've never experienced that. I feel like I'm missing something. I should probably, no, I have to. Yeah, I'll have to.
Maybe it's like, you know, asparagus and this effect on the body. Maybe some of us genetically can smell it.
Let me tell you, with this nose, I don't miss much. And I haven't smelled it yet.
All right.
Uh, well, all right, all right. Thanks for that, yeah.
Thursday, April twenty-fifth, we have finally a court date with, um, for the Elton Road uh, Blythe property. Seventy-seven Elton Road.
Oh, yes, what? Yeah, what?
So, uh.
What do we got?
We had some, um, based on the comments that we got from the attorney of the property owner. He used some inappropriate language and some threats. I will not repeat. So the judge and Tony Coppola, the the discussions have decided to have it, make it a remote meeting, Zoom.
Okay.
So.
Yeah.
I'll let you know what happens.
When's that meeting, did you say?
Thursday, this Thursday.
Oh, it's Thursday?
Thursday's a good day. We we also have the RFQs due for once forty-three Percival Avenue, which is the
Oh.
Columbus on April, close our business. So by next time.
Great.
We'll have some.
Excellent.
Recommendations, hopefully.
Wow, that's great. That's really wonderful.
And then, um, we will be also getting the RFPs back for the senior center generator on April twenty-nine.
Oh, oh, good.
And so next meeting, we'll have follow-up on all those things.
Oh, excellent.
Want to let you know that we are keeping up with them.
Yeah.
And, um, Kate and her staff has been doing some wonderful work on this new capability of property check. You know, there are people taking titles you know, fraudulently.
Yes.
Title the properties.
Yes, I've heard that's a problem.
That you can sign up and why don't you do it? She's been working on this.
Yeah, Kate, what do you?
People sign up like you have with the state, right?
Yeah.
Sign up with your tax ID and if somebody messes with that, get a indicator, warning, all of that stuff.
So.
That's exactly, uh, is that as of May first, we still have to be trained on it. It will go into effect on our website. And you'll go through the Record Hub, which is our land records, and you can sign up that if there's any anything filed in your name and that whole bit that you'll get a notice on it. A lot of other towns have done it. It does cost us because our vendor does not do this for free. Some of the, um, there's another vendor in the state that is as part of their package. Oh, but I think it's well worth it. And it will hopefully, um, help people feel a little more comfortable.
So people do have to sign up for that.
They have to sign up for it because we wouldn't know their emails or how to contact them. So they would sign up for it. There is going to be, um, we have a training on the twenty-ninth um, in my office and then we'll also make sure that we get it out on, you know, social media and on, um, Facebook and also on our website.
And could they come to the Town Hall too? Could you help folks if they?
Do it right online.
But what if they, some folks, you know, some folks?
I don't know because I don't know how they'll be notified. I assume it would be a phone call, but somehow or other they got to sign up for it.
No, but I mean, could they come and sign up at Town Hall, like in person?
I don't know until I find out more about.
Find out, yeah.
I'm not sure how all the in and out work.
Gotcha, yeah.
Would be where, um, I would think that we could sign them up.
Yeah, yeah.
So I don't think that would be a hardship at all.
Okay.
I need.
Find out. Yeah, okay, yeah. Let us know. Appreciate that. That's great, though. It does seem to be a big new fraud thing, huh? All right, right? Yeah, I've been reading about that, yeah. Oh, yeah, 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 yeah. Oh, yeah, yeah.
Hmm, was it you who shared that story where someone lives six months in?
Yeah, so there was a supposedly, um, and you know, it's hard to verify everything, but this happened in upstate New York where somebody hasn't been to their property in like five years. It was vacant property. It happened to go up and there was a house on the property.
Nice.
You know.
Nice.
That's one, I think, one of the biggest problems is simply the fact that it's, as you know, um, Councillor Atkinson said is that it's vacant land and they're not paying any attention to it and all of a sudden something happens. And you know what? It's probably with the elderly too. Um, we've been very fortunate that we have a somewhat educated population here in Berlin. And I I tell people to come in and we'll look at your records. You know, but it is it is something that we can, we'll we'll do this and see how it goes and hopefully.
It happens to the DEP here.
Amazing how many hands can touch a transaction and it doesn't get picked up on. How many different two attorneys usually in every transaction, at least if not three? And still it's, you know.
Well, you know. Yeah, and on that point, I think too is that I've been doing this since nineteen eighty-eight. There's been a real change in how people title search. It's not done the way it used to be.
The old fashioned way.
Attorney DiNafrio and, you know, and you're an attorney.
Yeah.
Um, you know. And I I think that you see the changes. And I was talking to a title searcher yesterday and we had to go into the books. It wasn't online. And he had no problem. He went right into the vault and did his search. But I said, I have title searchers that come in and they, if they have to go in to do view a paper, they walk out. I said, we're not doing this job. There's not the.
When I was trained.
The old fashioned way.
On how to use like a
A book.
Grant index. That was some of the first stuff that I learned.
So was.
An attorney in this area of the law. And it's with things being online, it's sort of like a lost art.
It is, and they would map it out as far as the acreage so that you talk about boundaries. They would see the boundaries. They would understand where the boundaries were.
It would go with paper, felt and paper and a pencil.
Right.
Really, like, yeah.
Having done some of those, yes, yes. Yeah.
Hopefully this helps people and I think.
Kind of fun.
A great service.
Geeky thing, you know, whatever, yeah.
It is.
Yeah. It's kind of fun. I don't know.
It's a geeky.
Yeah, yeah.
That a lot in my life, Mayor.
It's kind, yeah, well, you know, me too. Attorneys are geeks sometimes, you know, with some stuff anyway, yeah. Jeff, not you. You're not a geek.
Serious, Jeff, serious.
Not you, Jeff, yeah. Yeah, that's good. That, yeah, I know. That's that's gone, right? Nobody, they don't come in, right? They don't go to the books anymore, right? I mean, that's.
Well, only.
If they.
Only they have to.
Yeah.
If they're not, are they not all, uh, bars are not all?
The older records are not on really as clear online as.
Yeah.
It'd be.
Gotcha.
We copy indexes and didn't actually index them. But it makes them come into my office.
Yeah, there's.
What year was that deed I was looking for? Was it like?
Oh, yeah, that's right.
Nineteen forty-eight?
Oh, yeah, okay, that's. Yeah.
I mean, we're going back more, like, that's one of my things with the grant is back touching fifty-six.
Second.
But if you want a forty-year, usually you go for a forty-year title, right?
Right.